I'd like to call the City of Marine City Commission meeting to order. Marine City Fire Hall, regular meeting Thursday, May 3rd at 7:00 PM. Please stand for a prayer.
Gracious Father, as we meet today, remind us in your word that you have given us a vision of the holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, the cities of the earth. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Send us honest and able leaders. Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order, and that men and women from different cultures and with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
And the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Vanabod.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner Luffley.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
All right, moving on to communications. I need a motion to receive and file the pension board meetings, January 30th, and the Pension Retiree Healthcare Minutes, January 30th also. Communications.
Communications.
Sorry.
Support.
Motion and support. Any questions on the Pension Board Minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and address, and please limit your comments to five minutes.
Hello, my name is Eric Stocker. I'm from Marysville. Good evening. First, I'd like to say thank you to the Marine City Commission for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Eric Stocker, and I am running as a Republican candidate for State Representative for the 81st District. I'm a lifelong resident of Marysville, resident in St. Clair County my entire life, a longstanding and active member of the Republican Party, a former precinct delegate. I'm an Eagle Scout. I'm also active in my community, my church, and the public schools. Throughout my career, I've had the great honor of working with students while in the education sector, and I also have experience working in both state and federal legislative offices. My experience working in the legislature and currently in the executive branch makes me the best suited candidate to represent your concerns and take your interests to Lansing. I believe Michigan is actually on a better path now than we were a few decades ago, but we can't stop now. We have to continue to pave the road, not only for our future here, but for the future generations of our district and of our state. As a fiscally conservative candidate, I will advocate for the rebuilding of Michigan's aging infrastructure, which is badly needed, reforming our education system to allow students the choice. We need to show that there's not just one pathway to success through college, but there's multiple pathways, and we need to focus back on the skilled trades. They've been long ignored, and, you know, we desperately need them. They're honorable professions that can offer a great living, a great way of life. And the other thing that I'll be advocating for is to bring common sense solutions to Michigan's no-fault auto insurance. The funds, it's gotten too high. We need to make driving affordable again, so that way families can afford that second car, high school kids can afford to get that first car, which I know was a big moment in my life and many others. That's part of the American dream, is, you know, everyone remembers their first car. So I just wanted to say thank you very much. I'm touring about the community. I'm very excited to listen to what your concerns are, what your interests are, and I believe that together we can actually take St. Clair County values here, and we can put them back into the capital, and I believe I'm the right person to go to work for you and to do that. So equipped with my experience, with my background, I believe that I have the knowledge, the understanding, and the know-how to make those tough decisions that can benefit our community and benefit our citizens and our state. So I would just like to say thank you very much for having me. Introduce myself as Eric Stocker, running for State Representative, and please consider me as a champion for our people and our way of life. So thank you very much.
Bill Haas, 203 Pleasant. Since our last meeting, I'm not sure a four-day work week is quite too good. One of our, I'm going to be nice, one of our landlords in our community who make money off renting properties, having an open house, wrecked all his grass up. Now, we just had a sewer line collapse at North Mary, Holland, Maple Street. Took care of all that kind of garbage. But anyways, you know, he did his grass deal on Thursday, cleaned most of it up. Two big piles left in the street Friday, Saturday morning. I caught Mr. Avery coming out of Perks Saturday morning, so being as he likes to drive the only paved road over in my section besides North Mary. You know, I told him, you know, it's the house, the open house, you know, so he got on it. But you had two big piles of garbage, all the grass, and in between, you know, one on North William, one on Pearl Street, and right in between them is our sewer system, you know, where's everybody run? I mean, granted, he was probably going to clean it up. He's going to have an open house, but, you know, they're making money. Yeah, nothing, you know. I gave you people a tool last week, St. Clair County webpage, court docket search. It's pretty amazing when you look up our leaders, some of the people in charge. Looked up Susan Wilburn. Now, when we hired Susan Wilburn, the only no vote come from Mr. Turner, if my memory serves me right. I'm pretty good on remembering things. Yeah, you know, Lisa Hendricks, she slipped, you fell. You do the court docket search on her. Basically, she's in my landlord. I'm being nice. When she sold the house in 2016, it sold for $25,000. So we almost got like, you know, a landlord going to be doing landlords. What kind of, you know, and then she was even given a flight ticket at her own property, you know? So, I mean, we dropped the ball. We're hiring, putting people in positions of power. When you look them up online, I mean, I mean, come on now. I mean, we are a business. I pay my taxes. I don't want, I want qualified people in there. Just because somebody's been around a long time doesn't mean he's qualified to handle action. Some of our department heads, you gotta, you gotta, actually, you've been around this city a little while. You gotta know all the players. They're to go around and, nice action. What the people were put, stuck with, weren't stuck with, gave them a break. The break is about over, in my opinion. I done wrote you, told you I'm looking for four. One is an easy one. One, I believe, because if I was looking for today, I couldn't find my information. I believe statute of limitations, voter intimidation is five years. You know, we're burned up two, two and a half already. I know people don't like to, like I say, write out your friends. Georgia P., again, I'm hearing things about Kitty Corner from our elementary school. I tell you what, if I gotta go over there, and I gotta check it out myself, and I get pictures, and I can verify it, all you high society people, Lester House, Heather House, Snug, Riverbank, my truck and signs will be at every one. You don't take care of these problems in Cotterville Township with the overflow of the trailer park. Kitty Corner from, Kitty Corner from the school down the street from the high school. Like I say, people come to me, hey, we're having problems. Well, we can't do nothing about it. That's Cotterville Township. Georgia Palin, go see your people. I told you guys a few weeks back, go over there. What do we, what do we got to do? Maybe go to the state. Maybe we just take Cotterville Township over in this corner. You know, whoops, sorry, you can't take care of it. We'll take care of it for you. We'll just annex it to Marine City, collect them tax money, or tax money. And I'm telling you, you know, I don't, I'm not here, I don't want to be here, but things make me angry. We got, we got a rental property, he's going to help us repave North Bell River, you know, right from the edge of the street down to the river, right in one of the puddle sections. So it won't take long to wash that part of the road out. We get a few more North Bell River people doing the same thing, we can get that paved right to the Gersi. We'll be styling that. You don't have all the, don't have to hear it across the river every time a truck and trailer goes down the road. Man, man, you people, I'm telling you. I don't want to be here. I want people to do their job, you know? You people think, think, think I like coming here or something. I don't want to have to be here. I got other things to do, you know? I just try and take care of business. I gotta fight with everything to get something done, you know, do a little research. Man, we got people in charge, shouldn't even be in, be, people should have did their job. So.
Dan Micoff, 237 North Second Street. Two things, one minor, one major. The minor thing is, I'm just inviting everybody to come out next Saturday, May 12th, for the Titanic dedication. We'll have the plaque set up. It'll be really cool. That's the minor thing. The major thing is, I just want to say I'm glad to see Dave back in his seat after his little health incident, looking good, looking better than I did after mine, so it's good to have you here. That's all.
Anyone else like to see?
Approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with two changes. On the consent agenda, we add 8E, special event for the Titanic memorial dedication. And under 9A, we remove that portion of the Titanic memorial. So no more 9A, and we add 8E.
Support.
Motion and support. Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Moving on to the consent agenda. Need a motion to approve the special event for movie night.
Minutes.
Oh, never mind. Approval of the minutes. Jumping ahead a little bit. Can I get approval to, for the City Commission Regular Minutes, April 19th? Mr. Avery.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the City Commission meeting of April 19th.
Support. Motion support. Any corrections or deletions on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Moving on to the consent agenda this time. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda with special events permit for movie night, spring flower sale, BFW poppy sale, business license for Vera Grace, and the Titanic memorial. Mr. Avery.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended.
Support.
Any questions or concerns on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor? Roll call vote, I'm sorry. Sorry, roll call vote.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Luffley?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabod?
Yes.
All right, on to unfinished business. We need a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 2018-002, the parking of recreational vehicles, equipment.
Need motion to approve the parking for recreational vehicles, section 103.56.
Hearing no support. Anybody going to support it?
I support that second.
Motion support. Any questions or concerns on the second reading? Hearing none? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Luffley?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabod?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
All right, moving on to sidewalk replacement bid program. We've actually got some information on that that I would like to entertain a vote to, or a motion to actually table due to some information we just received. We need to clarify one of the bid, the bidders, and we just received that, Mike just received that this afternoon or tonight, so I wonder if I could get a motion to table.
Motion to table, and is there a timeframe on that?
I'd like to just see it next week, or next meeting.
To the next meeting? Table to the next meeting?
Support.
All in favor of the table?
Aye.
Opposed? Tabled. Moving on to new business, community wayfinding signage. Can you give us a little?
We've actually got Joe here. He was on the group that helped put together this document. He's going to do a little presentation. He was also part of the group for the infrastructure, which is the next item, and has a little presentation put together for that as well.
Perfect. There you go.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, good evening, everyone. For the public, I'm Joe Moran. I'm the chairperson of the Marine City Planning Commission. As part of our work, a few months ago, we were reviewing a presentation by Wade Trim. It was a parking lot study done for the city. As part of that review, we were not only looking at the parking situation downtown, but the signage as well, and somebody brought up the idea of reviewing the signage. It seems to be hit or miss and haphazard in terms of the way it's presented. There are some pictures in your handouts there that were taken to show the different types of signage around the town. We're looking for something that stood out a little bit better, so that people could identify places to park. We agreed essentially with the Wade Trim study, which said there is no parking shortage downtown. There's a parking awareness problem, and we wanted to address that. Someone also made the suggestion that we consider that the signage that we have directing people to the downtown area is also kind of meshugana, inconsistent, in some cases poorly placed, and if you think about it, directs people to only one end of the downtown area. And the suggestion was made, well, what about the other end of downtown? People can come in on the south end of downtown as well. So we floated the idea of having a downtown loop, and the more we thought about it, the better it sounded. So we formed a small committee. We got together, we looked at the signage, we kicked around the idea of a downtown loop. We prepared some samples for you there. Basically, considering the idea of a downtown loop. I'm going to read a brief paragraph from MDOT, their traffic and safety section. "Community wayfinding signs are a part of a coordinated and continuous system of signs that direct tourists and other road users to numerous key civic, cultural, visitor, and recreational attractions and other destinations within a city or a local urbanized or downtown area. This type of signing is used to support established community wayplans, uh, community white plans, excuse me, promoting attractions and destinations within a community. Community wayfinding signs are a type of destination guide sign for conventional roads with a common color and/or a unique header." And again, there are some samples there as well. Lots of places are known for their downtown loop. Chicago's the biggest example that I can think of. Making, designating a loop within the confines of our city basically would consist of Water Street, Broadway, Parker, down Chartier to Bridge Street, and back to Water Street. We have long been looking for ways to improve the Broadway and Parkway, Parker business corridors. Designating those roads as part of a downtown loop gets more interest in that particular area, will get more traffic in that area, and if indeed that is the case, more people will be interested in coming in and developing within that area, thus enhancing the Broadway and Parker corridors. So we have several downtown loop samples for you to look at. There's a map as part of the packet that indicates the corners. There are approximately 11 corners. We did a, Elizabeth McDonald, working under Mr. Ittrich, was kind enough to contact a supplier for us, and we can look at 30 by 48-inch signage with or without a logo on it from anywhere from $150 to $200 apiece. They would go up, as I said, around the downtown loop area there. The idea is to remove the confusion presented by so many existing signs that are out there right now, make the Broadway and Parker corridor more visible, and help promote the growth, show the city's support for those businesses throughout the loop that have made an investment in our city, and invite further investment in the corridor. Are there any questions about the loop before I move on to parking? Okay. As to downtown parking, again, we agreed with the Wade Trim assessment that the issue is not so much a lack of space as an awareness of where that space resides. So we're looking at redesigning the parking signage, perhaps involving the River Actine Zone in some kind of a competition to come up with novel ideas, like the, you know, they did the flags or banners that hung from the light poles. I thought they did a very nice job with that, or not the River Actine Zone, but the high school kids. The idea of adding free to the word parking by our parking lots to kind of, hey, it's free parking there. Make sure the striping is adequate both on Water Street but on the feeder, east-west streets as well. Investigating shared parking agreements. The post office, for an example, has a parking lot available at peak hours for downtown usage, people coming to dinner, people coming to theaters. We might be able to utilize those areas. We need to convince business owners to require their employees to park on side streets and lots rather than on Water Street itself. We should be creating a parking map that we could post on our website. We could have posters in the window of the city offices. We could have them distributed to businesses throughout town to put in their windows. Do everything that we can to publicize those areas within town that are available for parking other than just on Water Street itself. Somebody suggested use creative phrasing on the webpage, like "park it on market." Do what we can. Cost, no doubt, will be a factor, looking at the number of parking signs, and again, this is a, an estimate. We're looking about eight more parking signs for about, what is that number? About $720, it looks like. So between the loop signs, which will run us from 1650 to 2200, and the parking signs, we're looking at $3,000, give or take, for the signs themselves. Now, that's just an initial estimate. We haven't sent any bids out or anything like that. Doesn't include the cost of installation, the cost of taking out the old signs, and so on and so forth. So what I'd like to suggest is that, first of all, we get the commission's decision whether or not to proceed with the notion, or notions themselves, and then working with the commission, form a committee like we did for the Infrastructure Committee, to put together the details, figure out the costs, do the logistics and the planning, to come back for final approval. The city does not necessarily have to pay for the signage themselves, since we are investing in a downtown loop to promote downtown business, since we are investing in identifying parking that, by the way, by ordinance, city owners don't have to provide on-street parking if they're in the Water Street area. We can find ways to involve the business owners in the loop area in supporting the cost of the project. So that would be something that the committee would look at moving forward. So I don't anticipate this being a cost to the city out of pocket, other than perhaps the use of DPW to make the installations and removals. Any questions there?
You said the downtown area doesn't have any parking requirements. Is there anything you can look at for future buildings, or future growth downtown to put parking in?
Well, we would have to review the ordinance, and that's something that we're in the process of doing. There's very little that we can do downtown right now in terms of new building that isn't already on the street. It'd be mostly renovation. So yes and no? Yes, ma'am.
There's one sign, we have the two Portageons at the end of the street there by Saff's, and it's like 10 foot up on the pole, and it's like this big, because I know I get a lot of complaints on, you know, first, the other ones close until it gets warm enough. And so I know I talked to you about getting a sign to direct them down to the, at least the Portageons that we have all year round, but the sign is like, if you have to look at the pole right there, and you'll see this little sign about this big.
I never had a problem with that.
Well, it's small. I mean, if you're driving through, you know, on the average, a person, you hardly even notice the thing, because it's so small, and it's way up high in the pole.
I, I.
Because people in town still don't know.
You're talking about signage for the restrooms or for parking?
For the two Portageons.
For the Portageons.
Oh, okay. By the one park there, Drake Park. It's, but it's way upside. You don't even, you know? And also, I guess, other things, I'm kind of looking more to call it a business loop, which includes the downtown instead of saying a downtown loop, because I think that kind of, that's what most people call them, businesses. But I'd also like to see stuff like for the Little League fields and the high school, because, I mean, we get a lot of people coming into town for events at the schools, and they don't have any clue how to get to them. So that's a couple of other things you might want to add, and promote the bike path, too, maybe.
The high school, and what was the other one?
Um, Little League fields over there, those, and the other parks we have there, yeah. All right, just some additional ones.
Those are certainly things that a subcommittee could look at, sure.
And then I know you have a couple of these bigger signs, these ones that have a lot of stuff on them, and they're hard to read when you're going.
That's what we're looking to replace, basically, with the downtown, or business loop, or downtown loop. It's a lot easier to read.
Yep, no, good.
So, Mr. Moran, you're looking for a motion for a committee?
Unless you guys want to approve it now, which I doubt very much.
No, I think we need, and I think we need a little bit more information, too.
Yeah, yeah. Again, I'd be happy to serve. I think the Infrastructure Committee that we have already works really well together. If they'd be willing to hang together for this as well, might be. together. If they'd be willing to hang together for this as well, um, might be a worthwhile idea.
Mr. Avery?
I make a motion that we instruct the committee to do infrastructure, to provide a formal proposal to the commission on the signage issues.
Support. Motion and support. Anybody have any questions on?
Very nice presentation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Next, we're going to move on to the infrastructure committee recommendation.
Guess who?
Yep. That makes it easy.
Okay, this was a big one. A couple of meetings ago, and, and a lot of this information, uh, I'm sharing with the audience and, and with people at, at home, because they don't have the, the handouts. I'm, I'm going to try to summarize, though, and, and not read the whole package.
Please.
So, I know you appreciate that. Anyway, the, um, city commission formed a subcommittee consisting of Commissioner Clausen, City Manager Levin, Supervisor Superintendent, I keep doing that to you, Mike, I'm sorry, Superintendent for the DPW, Mike Ittrich, and three, uh, Marine City residents, Jacob Bryson, Trent Atbury, and myself. And we were tasked with coming up with a plan to deal with the city's infrastructure issues. Specifically, we have four major and twenty-eight local streets that are in pretty much non-patchable condition anymore, and are slated to be milled and capped, which means that the top inch and a half of the street is ground off, and an additional three-inch topping of asphalt is applied. In addition to those thirty-two local streets, we have twenty local streets that have infrastructure issues. That means not only the road itself, but the underlying water, sewage, and drainage need to be replaced. On the, uh, small map that you have in your packet, there is, I can't find it myself. Yeah. That would be this little, oh, I have fun with crayons with this one. If you look at that map, the, the city can be broken up into three separate areas. The northwest area, uh, bounded by Gladys and, uh, M-29. The southwest area, which is, uh, like from West Boulevard down to Chartier, and the east side. Those three areas account for almost a million and a half dollars' worth of repaving. A fourth area consisting of the four major roads, that would be, uh, North Bell River from DeGersy down to West Boulevard. West Boulevard itself from West, from, uh, Bell River to M-29. South Main Street, and, um, can't think of the other one. Ward, is it Ward Street? What's the fourth? I can't remember. Okay, sorry about that. Anyway, those, those, uh, four major streets, I got it on here someplace. Those four major streets account for another half a million dollars. So you're looking at, uh, just to repair the, um, local streets, actually, it's more than half a million dollars, I beg your pardon, it's three point three, uh, three hundred thirteen million dollars. You're looking at about one point seven million dollars just to repair the road surfaces in the city. Looking at the infrastructure improvements, the twenty roads, uh, that need either water, sewage, or drainage, or all three, account for an additional twenty-two million dollars' worth of repairs. That's a lot of coinage, okay? So, with that in mind, we had to come up with a plan to figure out how we're going to do that. What do we have to work with? According to City Manager Levin, there is currently about eight hundred and four thousand dollars available for road repairs. Of this funding, two hundred thousand is segregated as a reserve for unseen emergency repairs. That leaves a balance of about six hundred and four thousand dollars in the road fund, which is split between local and major roads. In addition, the city receives about forty-nine thousand dollars in annual funding from the state, which is split sixty-forty at this time between the local and major roads. If you look at, uh, our existing funds, and that addition from the state every year, and do not include any additional funding. We have a, uh, put together a plan that you'll see on page two. Right now, it's April. It's May. The, um, pavers usually have their bids all submitted and all the work contracted, uh, out, uh, as of the end of April. So we're a little bit late to get in a bid for 2018. However, the committee recommends that we look for bids to repair two of our roads, and that would be, uh, South Bell River, North Bell River, excuse me, from DeGersy down to Ward Street and Ward Street itself. That would amount to about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars of existing funds.
West Boulevard to DeGersy?
I'm trying not to read. So, let me, uh, let me make sure I have this correct. We're looking at Bell River from DeGersy to West Boulevard, and West Boulevard to M-29. Thank you. Okay, so, uh, for 2018, we're looking at two roads. For the other plans that we're going to present, uh, this evening, those two roads will still be, uh, on the list for 2018. That's the best we can hope for, given the nature of the business, okay? In 2019, again, using existing funds, we have four roads designated to be repaired for a total of about five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And if you look, there's a, the first flow chart here. After page three, uh, you'll see that those roads include South Main, which is a, a major road, uh, Third Street, South Third Street from Ward to Chartier, and North and South Elizabeth from Marine to Holland. Now, those roads were chosen, one, because it's a major road, North Main, we, uh, uh, North Main, we need to get that, uh, South Main, excuse me, we need to get that done. But Elizabeth and, uh, Third Street were chosen because they are long feeder streets. Part of the challenge to putting this proposal together was to figure out which streets do we do and when. And we tried to take a logical approach and say, well, the longer streets that fit, the more smaller streets would, would logically seem to take precedence, okay? Now, that logic goes out the window in the face of, uh, changing financial situation, you know, if we have, uh, an emergency that depletes the fund, and, uh, maybe some political concerns, I don't know. But we tried to do it on the basis of what seemed to be the most sensible thing to do. So in 2019, we have four roads done, but then, because our, our funds have just about been expired, we're down to one road each for the years 2020, 21, and 22, and two roads in 2023. That gets us approximately one-third of the job done in a six-year period using the existing funds. Unfortunately, beyond that, it's estimated with no additional funding for road repairs, the current list of projects will not be completed until sometime in the 2040, 2050 timeframe. And that's based on just accumulating funds in the, uh, major and local road funds based on current revenue. Any questions so far? Okay, now, this plan, using only existing funds, which can be seen as some as an advantage, uh, not only can only repair one-third of the streets in the six-year timeframe, and take until 2050 perhaps to be completed, but only manages to do one or two streets at a time. That eliminates the possibility of getting volume discounts from contractors and from suppliers. Also, it, we don't have the leverage as a city to leverage future, larger projects to get a better deal on the, on the process. So what we did was, we came up with an alternate five-year plan, uh, using two different scenarios that would use additional funding to do the road repairs. Again, both of those scenarios rely on doing North Bell River and West Street in 2018. We're going to ask for a four hundred thousand dollar infusion of funds. Whether that is a bond, a loan, a millage, uh, that will be up to this commission to decide. We're going to ask that that be part of the, um, November election, get, ask the voters to approve that for four hundred thousand dollars. For a five-year road repair-based issue, it would be designated funds. Now, folks have told us, told me, that they would vote for funding for roads, they would vote for funding if they knew what it was for. So, you know, and the complaints that we're getting about the roads that we've heard here over and over, it does not seem like too far-fetched an idea to pass. That additional funding, if applied in 2019, would allow us to repair ten roads in 2019, four roads in 2020, two in 21, two in 22, and one in 23. That's sixty-two percent of the roads that we have that need repair. At that time, we would ask for an additional four hundred thousand dollars to complete over the next two years, the remaining twelve roads. That takes care of the local road situation, milling and capping. It does nothing to address the infrastructure. With current funds, and with the additional funds that come in through taxation, it is likely that the first infrastructure repair, which if you look at the top priority, is Woodworth between the river and North Mary. That will not occur until 2027. That's a little bit long to wait, um, for a road that has an infrastructure critical issue. Uh, I think Elizabeth Street's a pretty good example of why we'd prefer not to do that. We've got two alternate scenarios, again, involving increased funding through a bond issue or a low-interest loan, something from the state. The first scenario would be to receive a bond or loan funds in 2020 for four hundred thousand dollars, uh, which will, uh, allow us to complete the, excuse me, uh, infrastructure repair and, and replacement project on Woodworth Street in 2020. A second bond for six hundred thousand dollars would be sought in 2026 to repair Holland Street. Now, you notice, six hundred thousand dollars is going to enable us to repair one street. These are not inexpensive repairs. I believe your packet includes, uh, and maybe not, but previously, you got, um, material from Mike Ittrich that outlined the cost of repairing the infrastructure. I think Woodworth is one point seven million, something like that. Yeah, so, I mean, the, the, the streets are not, uh, are cheap when you, you talk about tearing them up and redoing the infrastructure. So the, the first scenario would be to, um, add a million dollars in two bites, one, one four hundred thousand, one six hundred thousand dollar bite, to get two of our major roads done. The second scenario would be, uh, to get additional bond funds in 2020 for one point four million, which would enable us, I'm not used to talking this long, which would enable us to get a bigger bite out of the infrastructure, would be able to do Woodworth and Holland, uh, in 2020. And then a second bond issue would be asked in 2026 for six hundred thousand dollars to complete repairs to either Maple or Jefferson Streets. Given the, the current state of the city's infrastructure, the committee recommends that the city commission approve the alternate road repair plan that is looking for additional funds. Calling for a voter ballot initiative for four hundred thousand road repair bond in 2018, which would allow the city to repair the majority of the current road repair projects in a five-year frame. In addition, given the large amount of funding required to even begin the underground infrastructure repairs, the committee again recommends that the city seek, seek additional funding of one to two million dollars, beginning in 2020, either through bonds or state loans. It needs to be said that the cost of waiting is too high to be paid. We have North Mary Street and, and Elizabeth Street are examples of our infrastructure, basically, decay at this point. Some of the stuff went in before I was born. If we wait, the problems only multiply, and the costs to repair those problems multiply. The figures that, uh, Superintendent Ittrich gave us were in two thousand eighteen dollars. Next year, they're going to be higher. The year after that, they'll be higher yet. So the cost of waiting, we can't kick it down the road any further, folks. If we elect to, uh, bring in additional funds, that means we can do more at a given stretch, at least to begin with, which means we will have leverage, uh, and, and can apply for some volume discounts, either in material or in the work itself. So that volume business gives the city an edge in saving money on the overall cost. So that volume business gives the city an edge in saving money on the overall costs. We also have a number of city issues that are retiring in 2019, 2020, and I think another one in '24 or '26, which will help offset the cost of those bond issues. So what we are looking for, help me find my notes, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. I could just get my fingers to work. That's page four on your page, it's not on mine. What we are looking for is a notion, a motion from the commission to move forward on formalizing financial planning for either scenario, the, the $1 million or the $2 million bond issue, instruct the city manager to begin looking at the cost of those bonds, what it would cost us in interest to repay them versus a loan versus an outright millage. What did we figure, Elaine, it was, it was like one mil to repay the 400,000? Was that close?
I think it was more than that, the numbers we were looking at.
Yeah, that, you know, if, if we're talking about one mil, that's $1 per thousand of your taxable value, which, you know, given the cost that it, it will cost us to delay, I, I don't see how we can afford to turn that down. However, so that's the first step, is we need the commissions go ahead to pull the numbers together, come up with a concrete proposal, perhaps, if you want, we'll, we'll look at bids as well. And, and once we've done that, we will come back to the commission and say, here's what you got, and ask for your approval to go ahead with it. Questions? Lot to take in, I know.
Right now, we have enough funds to do the paving that we talked about for 2018 if we work expeditiously and getting quotes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and what we, you know, why wait?
Right.
We wanted to get started on that.
So, um, yes, Lisa.
Um, why aren't we doing, if we're going to do North Bell River Road, why aren't we going all the way to the city limit? Because it's bad all the way down?
I, I know.
Why wouldn't we just do a portion? I mean, if you're going to be there.
It, it, it was a question of grouping the, the streets in a, in a, again, like I said, a logical fashion. That certainly can change, there's no reason, you know, why we can't do that, it, it would make sense to me as well. However, there is one section of Bell River that we can't do, didn't you say because, so on, on, like from M29 South, we couldn't do on Bell River?
I'm talking north.
North, North Bell River.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought you meant to the other, okay.
North. Oh, to the city limit, that way.
I should know the difference between north and south, yeah. Doesn't need it, I guess.
It does need it, we're trying to take up bad areas first.
I know, but if you're in the area, might as well just finish the whole stretch. I mean, that, that's the first complaint I know we'll get, is that, why didn't you do all the way down?
Why didn't you go all the way? Yeah.
Put a price together, come back.
I would look at both scenarios, okay, because
Sure.
To me, it doesn't make sense not to do that portion since you're there. Other than that, yeah.
First of all, I'd like to get a motion to get Mike to do fixed pricing on the 2018 paving that we talked about, just to get something started. And, and I'd like to do this in two motions, if I could get someone to put them in. One for that, and then a second to investigate financing if we choose to put it on the, get more concrete information on the, I don't know if we need to do it in two motions, but...
Yeah, you have a couple sample motions there, so first and foremost, kind of what we're looking at is a project that we can do this year. And then second, I, I think Joe kind of was talking about a couple different things. We were talking about the road milling and recapping and $400,000 for that kind of five, six-year plan, and then there's also the infrastructure, which is the one, $2 million plan, talking about trying to get funding in 2020. So right now, kind of what we're looking for is to investigate funding sources for the $400,000 for just the five-year road resurfacing plan.
Okay, so I, I'll make the first motion, I'm going to make the second, but I'll make the first motion, but I'm going to make it to utilize current fund balance for this year to resurface North Bell River between the city limit and West Boulevard, if we can, okay? If you've got to cut it back, then so be it. And then resurface West Boulevard between M29 and South Bell River.
Motion support. Any questions or concerns, Anna?
Can I, can I make one comment?
Sure.
Implicit through all of this was the idea that emergencies or other issues could change the amount of money we have available and thus
Yeah.
The streets that we're able to do in subsequent years. So, and again, it's not a criticism, because I agree with you, already we've bumped some of that funding by including the additional part of, of Bell River. So, you know, consider that as being part of your deliberation.
I think what we can do with that motion is get the pricing split out.
That's what I, yeah.
So it'd be
That's the intent, yes.
Right, so it'd be like, say, West Boulevard is this much, and Bell River from here to Dugercy is this much, and Dugercy to city limits is this much.
Correct. I'm just kind of trying to include it all. You guys come back with what we can do, is what I'm saying.
Okay. Any other questions on that motion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Luckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Benabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Carries.
Next, I'd like to move on to the next motion on something involving letting city manager Levin put some paperwork together, actually also showing us when we pay these other debts off to kind of see, you know, without increasing costs to the city on financing this, either through bond or loans.
I move to direct the city manager to work with the city attorney to draft millage language, seeking to secure from $400,000 to whatever the top figure is, so that we can see some options.
I'll support that.
Mm-hmm. Yes, please.
Um, I agree, I think instead of just putting one little thing in there, I agree, we need to look at more than that if we have to, and, because, you know, if you're going to do it, I think people expect it, you know, they know we have to do it, and we already had that major collapse on the one street. We get more rain like we've been getting, we're just asking for it, unfortunately.
Mr. Avery.
I would like to amend that motion to put a reasonable time limit on this, so that we can get this to the public in time for a reasonable decision point to be on the bell in, in November.
Do you know
Chris, what would that be?
Was it by August 1st, we needed to get it to the county clerk? I believe it was, I think it's August 1st.
By August 1st, I'm agreeable to that.
But we'd have to have it up to the county clerk by then, so.
So it would be back to us by like
How long would it take you to get it back to us, roughly?
Well, I should be able to have at least some preliminary ideas at either the next meeting or the first meeting in June, one or the other.
Okay, let me say the first meeting in June.
Okay. I was hoping to have things done by July, so that we have time to put together a package to be able to present, that'll show what the funding represents to the taxpayers.
Yeah, with, with the deadline and when we have to get it up to the county to get in ballots, that gives us at least another three months there, just to be able to do any type of public notification and education.
This, this bond proposal is just for roads, it's, if the money is being handed or collected in the bond for just roads, it's not, not working on anything else.
Correct.
It could be.
It could be.
Depending how it's written.
Yeah, we put it
Infrastructure.
She made it broader, so that we could include, we need several scenarios.
Yeah, but give us the small one all the way up to
Road and infrastructure.
Road and infrastructure.
Road and infrastructure.
Yep.
Yeah, so what, what I'll do is, we'll probably work on putting together kind of numbers for like a five-year bond for roads only, maybe a, a 10-year one inclusive of roads and infrastructure, maybe a five plus five, where you do, you know, one millage and then try and renew the millage, and I'll make sure and include the information about the retiring bonds that we have and the value of those, so that we can kind of play with the numbers and figure out what would be the best fit.
Yep.
Any other questions, Anna? Hearing none, roll call vote again, please.
Commissioner Luckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Benabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we're moving on to a Tetra Tech contract update.
The Tetra Tech contract that we originally signed, I think it was back in 1999, and, and was renewed in 2014, has a clause in it that the five-year contract is subject to an increase from the rate of inflation every year. We received the information from Tetra Tech, and they kind of crunched their numbers, and the last couple of years that they have brought it before us, they've actually come in below the rate of inflation for the increase, increase in the fee. Last year, the CPI was 2.2%, and they only increased the rate 1.5%. This year, the rate is 2.9%, and they're proposing, requesting just an increase of 2% for their contract.
When is their contract up?
End of this cycle, so it would be through June 30th, 2019.
Okay, and then you anticipate rebidding this out?
I would definitely recommend it.
Can we get a motion approving or disapproving this contract? Yes, Mr. Avery.
Make a motion that we approve the Tetra Tech count, tract, increase to cover fees that are in the base contract, so 2% for this one.
Motion support, any other questions on the contract? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Benabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Luckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Carries.
All right, moving on, the architectural design service for the Guy Center, there's a request for a proposal.
So something more so I put together as a tool with one of the things that we're considering for our city, city offices. So I know we've discussed Washington Life Center as a possible location, we do have a closed session to discuss possible lease terms for that. I just wanted to let you know, I have also proposed a request for, I have prepared a request for proposals to do extensive ADA design improvements to the Guy Center, should we choose to maintain our city offices at that location. This isn't necessarily something I'm looking for us to act on tonight, but I wanted everyone to be aware that I, I do have this. I also wanted to mention the, one of the other considerations, if we do wind up staying in the office, is to secure the space in the city manager's office, so that there can be a private confidential space to discuss issues. There are people that come in the office that do have personal things that they need to discuss, and now with the, the backspace being completely open with the conference room and the kitchen and restrooms back there, the only thing that would really necessitate really is putting up a, a wall, that's about it, a pretty inconsequential cost. And then also potentially the option of allowing for the space to be accommodated, so that we can have access to our restrooms in the office. Right now, right now, they are behind the counter, which we have our cash register and receipting there, and it's not really a good practice to allow customers behind a counter where, where you receive cash, it really is a safety issue. So I did put that language in there. Should we choose to move forward with this in the future? I would be open to any feedback for the, the proposal, if, if there is anything.
Have I got anything? So.
Well, if you, if you move, if you do this at the, at the Guy Center, when you move into another building, the Guy Center, it would be used for recreation, I assume.
That has yet to be determined.
But it still belongs to the city, right? So you still have to be ADA compliant, you just wouldn't have to pay as much.
It depends on what the use would be.
No, it's used.
Right.
Yeah, and, and that's something, part, part of the process in going through this, we have some question as to whether or not an elevator is required, some of the standards that, that I've been hearing, I'm not necessarily sure if they're accurate, is that if the cost of doing a renovation for, say, putting an elevator in is over 20%, we may not be required to do that. And that's something where we'd really look towards an architectural design expert to help us determine what all would be necessary to make this building fully ADA compliant.
The architect would be for ADA compliant?
It would be a company that does have the ability to be able to determine all of that for us. For instance, the, the elevator, it, it may not be necessary if we don't have office space in there. Right now, downstairs, we have our storage and our records, so office employees have to be able to utilize that space, and, and whether or not we need an elevator, that would be something we would look to an expert to help us determine.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
At one time, I thought there was discussion about emergency exit out the rear of the building.
Yep, that's another consideration.
All right.
And that, that would be part of it.
That could be added into the scope of this.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, it's all included. That, second exits, the, the bathrooms, they're probably not fully ADA compliant, but probably very easily accom, they could easily be accommodated. I'm not sure what other issues we could potentially encounter, but that would be all-inclusive, what they would be looking at.
All right. Anyone else have any questions? So are you looking for
Not looking for a motion or anything, just wanted to bring this to your attention, that I have it ready to go at any point, should we move forward with that in the future.
Okay. Now, moving on to E, naming the driveway at the softball field. I was approached by one of the coaches of our state championship team, and they were hoping to name the driveway, and they would provide all the signage and follow-through with Mike and our city inspector, making sure it's up to snuff, and we'd actually see some prints of it, because it'll be somewhat decorative sign, but they're hoping to name it One Softball Way. Just wondering if, what the feeling of the commission is.
Sounds good to me. It's a good idea.
One of the reasons that this request is before us is because when you have people coming in from out-of-town games, they have a little trouble trying to find the area, and if we're able to direct them saying, you know, turn it one softball way, that way they, they have a good indicator of being in the right place.
Yeah.
And they were willing to pay for it, so I was kind of good with it. Can I get a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion support, any questions, Anna? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Next, I just have an announcement, we've got some board vacancies coming up in planning, we'll have one vacancy, Tifa, we'll have two, Marine City Area Fire Authority, potentially two, and the library board, two. So we need to get your letters of interest to the city clerk and applications by May Next, we're moving on to financial business, disbursements, including payroll of $206,423.74. Can I get a motion? Mr. Avery.
Make a motion to expend $206,423.74 for payroll.
Support. Motion support. Any questions on it? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Benabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Luckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Commissioner Carries.
Moving on to the city manager's report.
Number of meetings that I attended, the infrastructure committee, pension, budget workshop, ZBA, also attended a SEMCOG meeting regarding public-private partnerships. Yesterday, I attended the M-29 meeting regarding the road diet that they're proposing up there. Very interesting plan. They did get about 60 attendees, I'd say, and a lot of feedback, so that's something that I'm keeping my eye on for future consideration here in Marine City, to do something similar. I met with Paul Dingeman regarding sound systems. He might have a good plan for us in place that would utilize very small expense for some microphones and be able to kind of work with some of the existing equipment that we have. Still working on some of the details for that. Hopefully, I'll have something in the near future on that. I had a meeting with Michigan State Housing Development Authority. It was a housing assessment follow-up. Some of the gaps that they feel, not so much directly in Marine City, but encompass kind of the area of Algenack, Marine City, and St. Clair are some low-income, moderate-income housing. They are hopefully going to put together a housing assistance event as well, which will help some people that are having difficulty being able to either pay their mortgages or getting into housing. It's an event where there would be banks and other partners that would be able to help people with any type of housing issues that they might have. The Drug Takeback Day, we got about 50 pounds of medication that was collected here in the Marine City office. In on Water Street, ribbon cutting tomorrow at noon. Hopefully, most of you, if not all, will be able to make it. We took delivery of the vector truck last week, so they started doing some of the training today, and they've got a little bit more training to do on that. Let's see, I'd like to thank the infrastructure committee. I think they did a phenomenal job on putting together all this material. I think we had a really good group of people, and a lot of work went into that, so I look forward to moving forward with that group with the parking and street signage as well. I think that's all of that.
City manager tonight. Hearing none, we're going to move to Commissioner Privilege. Mr. Avery, what you got for us tonight?
Very simple, but we all like to complain about the roads in the city. Now is our chance to stand up and actually support this effort, knowing that we're going to have to pay for it. And this is going to require support. If we wait to do it out of existing funds, I don't think anybody here will see the end of it. So, we are going to have to borrow some money to pay for things that have been neglected. We can't go back and take it from other regimes before, so we need to do it. As a commission, we need to do our best job here to present this in a fashion, so that people can understand it's in their best interest, so... And enjoy the warmer weather now. Thank you.
We have on our calendar coming up soon, what we call Mother's Day. In other parts of the world, they call it Mothering Day, as the person who gives birth to us is not always the person who mothers us, and grandmothers, and aunts, and godparents, and so forth and so on. So, I wish everybody a happy Mothering Day, and give thanks for all the women in my life that have mothered me. Also, remind you about the Titanic thing on May 12th. It's an all-day event. They're going to be posting some of the things that are going on, and I heard about it on NPR. It's been all over the place, and it should be a great event. Also, on Monday, May 14th, at the PAC, at 7:30, is the East China Community Concert Band and the St. Clair Community Singers, and that is a free concert. There's going to be music from Cats, and Star Trek, and Beethoven, and Alfred Reed, and John Philip Sousa, and it should be an absolutely great event. So, come out. That's at 7:30 on Monday, May 14th.
Commissioner Flossin. I just want to go on, Mr. Avery, that this program is needed, and the funding is... has to come, and we have to get some money somewhere to fix this. We've already had two streets in the last two months, I believe it is, or the last month, that have problems. We've got one we're working on right now on North Mary, and the other one was, has been capped off now, but not paid. That was North Elizabeth, and that one there may need a little bit more soon, so our infrastructure is starting to fail, and we can't wait any longer. So, I wish everybody would think about the vote and support the roads.
Yeah, I'd really like to thank the committee, because that got back to us extremely quick for a committee. Usually, sometimes you send things to committee to die, and this was not the case. We've got some great information. We have some more information to go through, and I mean, we have to make some tough decisions, and nobody wants to spend any more money, but hopefully, with some of our retiring debt, we can, you know, look at different ways of, without increasing cost to the general fund, you know, there's just different ways of looking at it. So, I hope we can come up with something that'll work for everybody. I'd like to congratulate the Inn on opening, or the grand opening tomorrow, and I think that's about it. I was hoping we could do a motion to go into closed session. The city commission may enter into a closed session to review opinions regarding the consideration for the purchase or lease of real property, MCL 15.268. There may or may not be action taken upon returning to open session. So, I wonder if I can get a motion to enter into closed session.
I make a motion that we enter closed session to discuss the business to investigate property acquisition.
Support. Motion support. Any questions on it? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Luckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Benabash.
Yes.